We act within the scope of our authorized responsibilities and does not apply to punitive damages, as Mayor Appleby learned.
I see how these are all interrelated. Best practices, liability protections, and insurance coverages. And each area calls for us to meet certain standards of conduct. As long as we meet those standards of conduct, we should be okay.
I think you've got it, Dan.
Thanks, Mayor. I really appreciate you taking the time to share your knowledge so I don't have to learn the hard way. Thanks for your insight.
You're very welcome. And one of the other best practices we put into place is liability training. We hold a session every year for our council members, boards, and commissions. We have a session scheduled next month.
Great. I'll be there. Great. Thanks again, Mayor.
Absolutely. Dan's a sharp guy. I think he'll make an excellent council member, as long as he follows these best practices. Think and act in terms of "we," not "I." When acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, be fair and impartial. Don't make up your mind before the hearing. Base your decision on the evidence you hear at the hearing and the applicable law. Don't participate in the hearing or the decision if you have a conflict of interest, and don't engage in ex parte contacts. Refrain from personal or retaliatory actions. Focus on key legislative and quasi-judicial issues, and leave administrative matters to the staff. And maximize your liability protections by staying within the scope of your authority and avoiding willful and wanton conduct. I hope this video has helped you identify how to stay within the scope of your authority as an elected or appointed official, maximize your liability protections, and enhance your effectiveness as a civic leader. Good luck.
I thought that was a little better than you having to listen to me for an hour. I'm Courtney Coger. I'm a partner with the law firm, Cootack Rock. I'm the outside lawyer for MPR, and you really don't ever want to see me again because if you do, it means you've been sued and there's a problem. So I'm hoping that I get to come down for this one pleasant trip and have cookies and see people get awards for sticking around and find here what a good city this is and a great place to work. I'd like to keep it that way. Why does MPR want you to see this and to think about these things? And it's because an ounce of prevention is worth a whole pound of after-the-fact remedies. I know some of you are sitting on various boards and commissions. You don't have as many duties as the council members and the mayor may have, but you are still serving in an official capacity, and you can be a target for a lawsuit. And don't get me wrong, at some point, somebody's going to get sued. It is the nature of our society. The goal is not to get sued very often, and when you do get sued, make sure that your ground is defensible so that you can get out very quickly. MPR is probably going to be standing right there in court with you, providing you with a defense and a lawyer, and helping you get through that process. But ultimately, it's your money, your member contributions, that pay for that, both in terms of the lawyer's fees and in terms of any settlements or judgments. So it's in everybody's interests to prevent those claims that we can prevent from happening and just cut everything off at the source. Obviously, there are some claims that you simply aren't going to be able to prevent. Some of the most common areas, however, that we see claims come up from MPR are civil rights claims, which can come up either in an employment context, or they can come up in a law enforcement context. We see land use claims, zoning, planning, inverse condemnation, taking of property, imminent domain. People get a little unhappy when the government messes with their property. You can understand why. It's a natural reaction. So if it's going to happen, it's very important to think ahead and do it in a fair and professional manner so that it can be defended. We also will sometimes see issues come up with records. You saw a little bit in the film about email. Email or any other record that's maintained by the City of Gardner is, in effect, a public record under the Kansas Open Records Act. It's accessible to pretty much anybody who wants to come in and see it. There are some exceptions. Some things can be kept confidential, but the assumption is it's public. That's Kansas public policy by statute. So one of the things that we'd like to emphasize is you've got professionals on your staff. Rely on them. And you have an HR director. There she is. Let her make the hiring and firing decisions, and set the policy, and tell you what's an exempt employee, what's a non-exempt employee, what you can do, what you can't do, how to handle disability, how to handle claims for hostile work environment. Particularly, the council members, you are the last people who should be involved in any kind of employee dispute, partly because you're not trained, and partly because you can be seen as having way more effect than you actually have. As the film says, you are seen as the elected official. You are assumed to be powerful. What may be a joking comment to you can sound very different to someone who's hearing it, that, oh, my gosh, the council member just said something nasty to me. I'm going to get fired. Or I've been fired. It's because Councilman so-and-so didn't like me, and he made a joke in my presence, and now you have a lawsuit. Assume that your words are being judged as an official of the City of Gardner, not as an individual. That's a burden. It's a burden for everybody who agrees to serve on a commission, to run for office, to serve as a council member. But it does put you under the magnifying glass. You are subject to public scrutiny. And believe me, if you're sitting on the Planning Commission and somebody's zoning application is denied, they'll get that magnifying glass out, and they'll look. Or someone who is aggrieved by a council decision that you don't approve, Megamart or Walmart or whoever it is, they'll get a magnifying glass out. They may come and get emails. They can come and get minutes of committee meetings. They can find out if council members have been talking and violating the open meetings statute, which is, by the way, one of the dangers of email. If you have electronic correspondence going among a quorum, a majority of a committee or a commission or of the council discussing business, that can be deemed a meeting that was not held publicly, and you are in violation of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. So be very, very careful to conduct business here, when it's on the record, when you're at a scheduled meeting. Then you have your legislative function or your quasi-judicial immunity. There's no question about what was said. Everybody hears it. Everybody gets a chance to respond to it. I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the claims that we've seen come up. I've been working with MPR for about five years now, and I do see some of the less routine claims that come up. The claim that started this process of MPR sending me or one of the other lawyers who works for them out to train actually came up on the Missouri side. As you may know, MPR's been active in Missouri a lot longer than in Kansas. And it was a combination. It was a land use case. And there was a small development district. A developer was putting it up, and they wanted a tax improvement district and a zoning change. And it was a long and involved process. There were multiple meetings. And ultimately, the council did not grant a particular zoning variance that the developer wanted. And one of the reasons that one of the council members objected to the zoning variance is he believed that the developer had misrepresented something at one of the earlier meetings. And he was not quiet about this belief. He didn't just say it at the meeting. He sent an email to two or three other people in the city staff complaining that the attorney who represented the developer had made a false and misleading statement at a meeting. When the zoning ordinance or change was denied, a lawsuit resulted. And one of the claims in that lawsuit was against this particular councilman personally for defamation, because he'd accused the developer and that the developer's attorney is making a false statement, and he was sued for punitive damages. And he was sued. The allegation in the lawsuit specifically was that when he sent the email, he was acting outside the scope and course of his employment or his official elected employment. That took him outside the scope of MPR's coverage. Gardner, the city, is the member entity in MPR. When you are acting as a commission member or as an elected official or an administrative official, you are within the scope of that coverage. Councilman Fowler was not when he was acting outside that. Now, that lawsuit got settled. MPR helped get it resolved. But this gentleman was facing a claim of personal liability with no insurance coverage and possible exposure to punitive damages because he had gotten a little hot under the collar and sent some emails that he probably shouldn't have sent. Those are the kinds of claims we'd like to help you avoid so that you don't have to face them and we don't have to pay to defend them. Another one that came up, this one came up in a small town in Missouri, and the plaintiff had been the fire chief in the town. And he was also a developer. And there was an allegation against him that he had hooked up his development to the city water source and wasn't paying for the water. And tempers got a little heated, and one of the, I guess it's the mayor, if I remember correctly, accused him of stealing water and told him he really ought to resign as chief of the fire department because it wouldn't be appropriate to have someone who's stealing from the city, serving in an official capacity. Well, he resigned, and then he decided to file a lawsuit, and he claimed defamation, and he claimed all sorts of civil rights violations, that he hadn't gotten due process and equal protection of the law, and that the city had acted inappropriately, and he sought punitive damages. That's another one where that defamation claim was alleged that not only did you terminate me and say that in front of somebody, but you then circulated the statement that I had stolen city water. And so he was making accusations against some of the individuals. They were acting outside the scope and course of their employment. He was also, by the way, claiming that the city, when they stopped him from taking the water, they also denied a zoning ordinance or a change that he wanted, and he claimed they took his property, and that he sued for what's called inverse condemnation, where he's saying, the government is doing something that's effectively stealing my property from me. Inverse condemnation comes up a lot. If you mess with somebody's job or somebody's property, those are the people who are looking for a claim, and you are most likely to hear from. Another one came up last summer. There was a fireworks company. They wanted to run one of those little temporary fireworks stands, and they picked out a place, and they sought a temporary use permit, and the city denied it, but it granted a temporary use permit to somebody about a quarter of a mile over there who had pretty darn similar circumstances. And so the claim was, well, you know, equal protection of the law. We had the same property, the same setback, the same traffic issues. Why did you grant theirs? Why didn't you grant ours? So that resulted in a lawsuit. That one got filed in federal court. Another one that came up, this is another, if you're messing around with somebody's job. There was a city employee who got demoted, and she was demoted by the city auditor. And unfortunately, in that particular city, there was a bit of a political division. The majority of the council was one political party. The city auditor was a different political party, and there had been some pretty hotly contested elections. So when this employee got demoted by the city auditor, it appeared to the auditor, at least, that some of the council members were taking her side in the story. But the employee made a claim that she had had a hostile work environment, and that the city auditor, who was female, had been hitting on her because the city auditor, on one day, when this particular employee had a bad day, the city auditor said, I felt sorry for her. I got her a single rosebud in a vase and gave her a flower to put on her desk to cheer her up. That turned into a sexual harassment lawsuit. This is why elected officials should not be involved in any kind of personnel matters. That one was well-intentioned. It, by the way, has not played out yet. I don't know what the ultimate result on that lawsuit will be. But if you're going to send flowers, talk to your HR director before you do it, and she can tell you no. And if she says no, don't do it. That's why you have staff. You know, if there are going to be issues with law enforcement, you have captain, you have a chief of police. Your law enforcement officers are trained. It's not the council or the mayor's job to train them. It's not your job or your job to make HR decisions. That's your HR director. You have other administrative things. Rely on your city administrator to make those decisions. So those are some of the key areas that we have seen result in lawsuits. And now that I've hopefully scared you all to death, let me tell you that it's really not quite as bad as all that. The film came out of Colorado, and there's a slightly different legal scheme there. But Kansas has what's called the Kansas Tort Claims Act, and that provides immunity for public employees acting in the scope and course of their employment. So only if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing for your job, that will cover you in most areas. So, for example, for the council, if you are engaged in your legislative functions and somebody doesn't like the way you vote, they can't sue you for that. You have immunity. You have immunity for failing or enforcing or failing to enforce the law. You have immunity for your discretionary acts when you're sitting as a judicial body, quasi-judicial body, and ruling on something. If someone doesn't like your vote, that in and of itself is not grounds for liability. You also have immunity for injuries that result from the use of public property, and there are a whole other list of very specific exemptions. And there's a cap on how much the liability is, and that cap is tied in with how MPR provides coverage, because the goal is to have you covered to the maximum extent of your liability and then have the sovereign immunity that the Kansas Tort Claims Act kick in. But the goal, at the end of the day, is for you to have as few lawsuits or claims as possible, to have them as defensible as possible, and to keep you operating smoothly. Because in addition to the monetary issues, if you guys get sued, you have to take time away from work. People will have to go and be deposed. Documents will have to be produced. Somebody may have to go to trial, and it becomes a burden and a hassle above and beyond the monetary issues. So think first. The advice in the film is excellent. Think in terms of "we," not "I." But the biggest one I like to think about is think about it as the billboard rule. If there is something that you would be embarrassed to see on a billboard as you're driving down I-35 or on 56 coming into town, that so-and-so said such and such, or somebody did this, don't say it or do it. You are not a private citizen when you're serving in these roles. And keep in mind that somebody may be looking. So you don't get to make the off-color joke at work. You probably better be careful about making it anyplace outside the confines of your house. But if it's something that you think somebody could make fun of or could use for liability, just don't say it. If you don't say it, it never becomes an issue. And so you are free to go about your business and focus on the needs of the city and continue your service. I will try to answer any questions if anybody has any. Oh, good. I scared them all.
In the Planning Commission or Utility Board, Electric Board?
I mean, you folks are doing a really important service, and you know that. Keep doing it. Our goal is to make sure that you are protected, and that's why we'd rather warn you upfront than see you on the other side.
Do you have one question?
Yes.
You know, there was, at the beginning of that film, and also, I know, in our League of Kansas Municipalities book, there's a, I guess, a paragraph that talks about how council members are not, you know, don't have any power outside of the council and don't have any authority. But there's also, I mean, it's been common practice here, I believe, that if we ask a question of staff, that they provide that answer to any individual council member on a fairly, you know, easy basis. But some things seem to be, you know, off limits. So what are the, you know, what are the lines there that...
The majority of communication from you as a council member should go through the top administrative people who report directly to you. So, for example, if you have a question about a personnel policy, you should go to Mary. You should not go to the secretary in the department or ask someone else because you're going to the person who reports. It's like a flow chart where this commission and this commission and this commission report to this person, report to the administrator, report to the mayor, report to the city council, if you stay within the chain. There's nothing you can do, or there's no intent to stop normal, everyday interaction. When you walk into your office and you say hello to someone, you're not demanding that they do something. You're not asking them to stop their job, to give you special treatment. Those kinds of courtesies are fine, you know, saying hello when you get coffee or, you know, good morning, that type of thing. But in terms of, if you want information about a law enforcement issue, a city administration issue, something to do with Gardner Electric or the Sewer Division that we heard employees getting commended earlier, go through channels and direct your inquiry to channels. If you direct an inquiry to Mary, and she says, oh, someone else can answer that, and sends you to that person, fine. But you've gone down the proper route. And also, I think Mary's a little less likely to be intimidated by you. And there's no sense on the employee's part. If Mary calls and says, you know, Councilman Fotovich is coming in to talk to you. He has a particular question. Could you help him while I'm not there? Nobody feels that you're cutting her out of the process, that you're asking the employee to do something appropriate. It's all clean and clear and through channels. So that's the cleanest way to do it.
Well, and one of the times we had this happen was where we paid the city administrator, or recruiter, to search for a city administrator, and the bill came back about 40% higher than was contracted. I suggested that we did not, we should not have paid that bill, and the mayor said that that information was off limits because, as an individual council member, I had to have, you know, an authority to, via the other council members, to see those records. And, you know, my comment was, I had seen those records weeks before, and, you know, no one had them under lock and key then. But then, after the mayor decided to discontinue the search process, those records are no longer accessible. So is that a valid use of that paragraph in the League of Kansas Municipalities, you know, book that says, you know, a council member has no authority? I mean, shouldn't a council member be able to see if he thinks something is amiss if those records? Shouldn't those records be open?
If I understand correctly, it relates to a potential hiring or personnel decision. Those are one of the exceptions under the Kansas Open Records Act that do not have to be open records.
Well, but, I mean, they were open to me during the search process. I mean, I guess that's another question, is where does the, you know, what is a council member privy to? I mean, we have executive sessions, obviously, to talk about things that are not open.
Right.
But as long as a document was open two weeks earlier when we were interviewing potential city administrative candidates, why would that document be closed after the process was closed?
If I could step in, Courtney, you don't know the circumstances.
I was just going to say, I'm not sure I understand the context well enough to understand the question.
Well, I mean, is any document...
I don't think you're capable of answering that from the standpoint of a legal opinion without knowing the circumstances around those particular documents, and, you know, that's...
And I would tell you to ask the city attorney on a question that's a legal specific. Go to the in-house attorney for the legal.
But a council member does have the right to view records that aren't open to the public. Is that...
If they're open records, yes. But if they're within one of the exceptions...
Basically, we should never see anything that's not also visible? Is that what you're saying? I mean, in other words, there's a document, for instance, we were able to see the resumes that would not be open record. And I can understand why those resumes should not be open record. But if they were open record at one, an open record at one, I'm sorry, if they were available to a council member one time, is there anything that would prevent them, as long as that council member kept them confidential, that would prevent him from going back to look at those records at a later date?
If they've been withdrawn? I don't know. I mean, if they've been withdrawn, if the search firm was no longer employed, if you had no, if the city had no access to...
I mean, the city still has the documents.
Yeah, I have to tell you, I'm sorry. I'm out of my water on this one. I don't know the context enough. Anybody else want to? All right. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Courtney, appreciate it. We do have time allotted on the agenda if the members of the public would like to speak on city matters or items that are on the agenda, not part of the public hearing, or that are not on the agenda.
My name is Vernon Fickerd. I live at 128 Pony in Gardner. I've lived here in Gardner 59 years. And in that 59 years, I've served 21 years as a volunteer fireman, eight years on the school board, two times on the city council for a total of 13 years, and two years on the electrical utility board. Back throughout the wall are pictures of all the men and the women who have served as mayors since I've been here, and I've got to know all of them fairly well, either serving with them on the councils or personal contact with them. These mayors and councils are just typical citizens of the City of Gardner who were interested in doing what was best for the cities of Gardner and to make Gardner a better place to live. And each one of them, those councils and mayors, I'm sure, had plenty of decisions, bad decisions and good decisions, that they had to make. But they must have made some good decisions, or how would the City of Gardner have grown from 650 citizens to the 18,000 that there is today? Now, with 18,000 citizens in Gardner, there are surely enough intelligent and civic-minded people that we could solve our own problems without asking for help from strangers who don't like, who don't live in Gardner. I hear that the outside companies may be giving the city big sums of money, so if they do, they'll be figuring out ways to get it back. The quickest way would be to raise utility rates or discharge flows that they don't deem necessary. I hope the city council will consider very carefully before giving control of our cities to outsiders. Thank you.
Anyone else? That being the case, we will move on to the consent agenda. We do need to remove Consent Agenda item number three, as this is a resolution and requires a roll call vote. Is there a council member who wishes to remove any other item from the consent agenda? There being none, how would the council like to proceed with items 1, 2, and 4 through 7?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, Harrison, second morrow, that we approve Consent Agenda items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Consent Agenda item number three is a resolution. That be a resolution number?
2391.
2391.
Mark, excuse me. He said resolution.
Resolution, yes. 18.
I just have the on this.
Okay.
I will get it.
Okay. And this is with respect to zoning and the fees charged for temporary signs. 1865.
All right, mayor and council. Back last fall when we adopted our fees, we instituted a temporary sign permit fee for the city. And upon reviewing that at the start of this year, staff determined that we'd like to restructure the fee amounts and are recommending the change that was presented to you in the council action forum, from $30 down to $35 for the first two permits of the year, and then it's a staggered upward for the next two permits. Each of the permits would be allowed for 30 days, so business took up to, basically, 120 days worth of temporary permits if they're willing to pay the fee, which is a significant number, if you think about temporary signs in front of a business over the course of the year. So, I'm willing to take any questions, but there's time for staff to review and then to go out and make sure that the time that's designated is followed and invited by. And this is in line with what we've seen in the metro area and some of the other communities.
How many temporary sign permits have we issued, for instance, in 2011?
I don't have that information on me, I'm sorry. I can get it for you, but we issue a significant number of them. We have a lot of them that don't apply, and then we have to go and talk to them, so it's a lot of work on part of staff to keep up with it.
Why would you want to reduce the fee if it's a lot of work?
Just simply because we went from zero to 50, and we thought that it was more equitable to start at $35 for the first two, and then ratchet it up thereafter.
I mean, are we talking 50, 100, hundreds of temporary sign permits?
I really can't answer that.
10?
I can't answer. It's more than 10, significantly more than 10.
And which neighboring communities are we comparing ourselves to on those fees?
Yes, Overland Park, Olafah, Lenexa, Merriam, Lawrence, and Shawnee.
Were all their fees 35 exactly where they were?
No, they vary. Actually, the average is about 50, which is why we ended up where we are earlier, but Jim Sherman came back and said that he would feel more comfortable if we started out at 35. So, Overland Park is 35 for the first two permits, and actually, what we're recommending is their approach. Olafah is 60 for each one. Lenexa is 50, and their days vary. They actually allow less, the more you, less days, the more you go. Merriam is 25, and Lawrence is 25, and their code hadn't been updated in a significant amount of time. And then Shawnee's got a variety of different options, which range from three days at $20 to 90 days at $225, or non-consecutive days from $100 to $300, depending on how you want to utilize it. So, there's a variety of approaches. We try to take the most simplified approach, allowing, you know, two a year for 30 days apiece for the $35. Staff's amenable to whatever pricing. We just felt like this was a little bit more fair for businesses since it was a new approach.
Of course, we can obviously modify this at any time.
Absolutely. That's why it's in the resolution format, and that's why when staff came back to me and asked that we reconsider the rate for at least the first two signs, that I felt that was a fair recommendation for our businesses.
So, if I understand it correctly, a 30-day sign is $35?
For the first two times.
Each?
Each. So, it's 35 for the first month, 35 for the second month.
Sixty days is $70.
Yes.
And then, if you want it for 90 days, it's 75.
Yes.
An additional 75.
Yes, every time it's new, because, again, that starts our review process and clock ticking again.
I want to make sure I understand. Is this the first year we've had the fees in place?
Fees for this particular type of sign.
Okay.
But it's probably our biggest administrative thing that we do as far as signs are concerned, because otherwise, the only time we deal with signs is generally on new businesses or when a business is doing renovations, so those aren't very frequent, but these we deal with almost on a weekly basis.
And did this go into play January 1st?
Yeah, we approved it last August with the budget, and then it went into play on the first, yeah.
Have you had any backlash from any businesses that have had the, not the fine, but the fee applied to them, and they've been pulled in?
Not yet, but we've made them aware there is a fee, so, yeah. And we've also told them we are coming back to adjust it. Like I said, this is common practice in other municipalities, because there is, you know, considerable amount of staff time that's put into managing the temporary fee, or temporary sign program.
What qualifies as a temporary sign? Is it just a little yard sign that's between the, that's just out of the easement, or is it the banners that are hung on the front of the building?
Either of those could be considered that, and this is primarily, you know, it's related to business, not, it's not, we don't regulate currently, because, you know, we're in the middle of our sign code update, which we're a little behind on, but we don't regulate currently, like, yard sales or garage sale signs, so this is just really primarily business-related. So, when someone wants to put out, you know, sale on, you know, whatever this week, that's the type of things that we're looking at.
Does it apply, if it's like a chalkboard sign that goes sidewalk and then brought into the business every evening, does that still fall into the same?
Those actually are not allowed. So, and those are the things that we, in the same program, we're dealing with too, so. And that's part of, when we're cleaning up our sign code, we want to make that stuff really clear and work with the committee that we've got established, once we start that here in the next couple of weeks, to, you know, make sure that those different types of temp signs are addressed very specifically.
So, I guess, well, I'll just voice the concern that I have. We don't have, so basically, right now, if somebody comes and says, "I want a temporary sign to put up," we're gonna charge them $35. But what are the, what are we telling them? Are there...
Right. There's regulations on size, placement, we review what it can say, yeah, all that kind of stuff, but of course, within the parameters of the fact that there's freedom of speech. So, again, the regulation on what it says is not as much as more of like the placement, the size, whether it's a distraction, because, again, why we're regulating this is primarily for use of right-of-way or, you know, distraction to drivers and that kind of thing, so, that's why.
And I guess the question that, you know, as I was going through and started thinking about this, we've got, you know, our church signs that come out on Friday night.
Again, those aren't, we're not addressing those at the current time, and it's not spelled out. I mean, technically, not legal, they're in the public right-of-way. And that's not what this is about. This is, and once we get into the sign code and that stuff gets delineated, and we'll work through that with the council and the planning commission, we're gonna spell that stuff out more clearly, and we're gonna work with you on what you all feel comfortable about as a governing body for regulating. And then, within, of course, the law...
So, like, grand opening would be, would fall into this?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I don't understand what precipitated a $15 reduction. I mean, what's...
Just an employee requesting to consider that $50 is a big change. And at the time, when we went through and we were looking at it, we were trying to make sure we were covering our costs. So, I'm fine with leaving it at $50, but had a staff member suggest that perhaps it would be better if we started out a little lower and moved it up, and I'm bringing that request.
So, if we, is the time more in going around and looking to make sure people are adhering to it, or is it more people come in and say, "I want a request of permit"? What's the...
There's the time to review the permit, so you figure about half an hour, and our employee that does it is our codes administrator, so he's the manager, so he's paid at that level. You don't have anyone else that can do that kind of review, because, again, there's legal issues involved. And then, there is time on the back end where we spend a considerable amount of time at different, you know, especially in the warmer months, managing ones that are put out illegally, and also the ones that go up and people just forget to take them down. So, if there's a considerable amount of time, and we try to work with people on those, so for folks who'll, "I just need another week," we try to be very accommodating to them, but there is staff time involved, so. You figure an hour, an hour on average, and that's on the light side, sometimes it could be more. And that's, if you look at his rate of pay with salary and benefits, you're right up there, really quickly. So, the 50 is justified, the 30 is a nicer way to, 35 is a nicer way to ease into it.
How would the council like to proceed with Resolution 1865?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 1865, establishing various fees and charges in Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Property, Title 13 Utilities, Title 14 Flood Plan Management, Title 15 Building and Construction, Title 17 Subdivision Regulations, and Title 18 Zoning.
Second.
Motion Broxterman, second Freeman, that we adopt Resolution 1865. Broxterman?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Fotovich?
No.
Morrow?
No.
Harrison?
No.
New business item number one, consider passing ordinance number...
2391.
2391, adopting the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City. Laura?
Every year, about October, I stand up here and tell you that the League of Kansas Municipalities has finished the new edition of the standard traffic ordinance, and we adopt by reference their new traffic ordinance, and then we add all the stuff that's specific to the city of Gardner for, you know, vehicle idling, after-hours parking, our little definition addition for transportation of open container, et cetera. And we did do that, October 3, 2011, you passed, accepted the 2011 edition and added all that stuff. I forgot that there was a December 2010 edition done by Public Works about parking on residential areas. And so, for the 2011 edition, I went back to the 2010 to make sure I got all the stuff specific to Gardner, and forgot about the residential parking piece needed inserted. So, this is a housekeeping, cleanup-my-error item, where you're basically adopting the 2011 standard traffic ordinance again, and adding in all the things specific to Gardner again, including the residential parking issue. So, this cleans it all up from before.
So, basically, Section E, all Section E was left out, or...
No, I don't, let me look, I've got it right here.
Paragraph E?
Yes, Section E, what happened was, it went from D to F before, and then in, and that was in 2010. And then in December 2010, Public Works went through an exercise with you about what you wanted to do about residential parking, and when we published that piece, we only started with Section E. So, I neglected to go back and pick up that part and insert it in this whole thing. So, what happens is every time we pass an ordinance, it says, "It repeals the other ordinance," and now it's this one, I rewrote it, so it wiped it out. So, now you have to put it back in, and we reprint the whole thing, and now it's all gonna be in there, instead of overriding one little piece by putting the new one on
How would council like to proceed? 2391.
2391. I move we pass ordinance number 2391, adopting the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's edition of 2011 with additions and amendments.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Morrow, that we pass ordinance 2391. Harrison?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Broxterman?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Fotovich?
Yes.
2391 passes. Council updates. We have Kerit updates.
Good evening. I'm very excited to stand here and give you kind of your yearly review of our Kansas Eastern Region Insurance Trust pool that we're part of for our workman's compensation. And as you know, we talked about this in Budget quite a bit, but I wanted to share with you kind of our year-end results and where we're at. As you know, we did annual safety inspections, both with the State of Kansas and also with Thomas McGee. Those inspections of our facilities went amazingly well. The third-party administrator was extremely complimentary, complimentary to the city of Gardner for the safety culture that we've instituted, and also how all the employees just work and believe in that every day. State of Kansas also came back and said, "Great job, Gardner. We've not been to a city that has things in order, and all your employees are so engaged." So, that was just really, really exceptional news for us. I got the year-end reports in, and our mod rate, which is the rate that, you know, they look at your accidents, injuries, all of that, and determine a mod rate, has dropped down below 1. We haven't been there for many, many years. We've been working through this. I know since I came on, this has been a big project, and it takes about five years for things to start dropping off. And we talked at Budget, the work comp premiums, you know, have reduced drastically. From 2010 to 11, they dropped $90,000 a year in premiums. I mean, that is just huge. Again, this year, from that $90,000, we dropped another 18, almost $19,000. So, in two years, we've saved, in the city of Gardner, expenses $108,000 just on our workman's compensation premiums. We were at over like 230 in 2010, so in two years, we've really halved that premium, and that is just incredible work by our staff, our department directors, and the believe, our administration, and you all. You've allowed us to continue that safety program, and wanted you to understand when we spend those dollars, what we're getting out of it. And the last thing I wanted to report, a couple of things. We have had for the last five years, we've been in a plus program, and that's a program that Kerit has, that you have to do different things. Like, you have a safety committee, and you do safety fairs, and you do the walkthroughs, and all these various things. And we've earned all of our points in that program for now five years. And that also then gives us an additional 5% reduction in our rate. So, now on top of that $18,000, when we get our next bill, we're gonna see another 5%. So, that is really exciting as well. In 2011, we only had nine employee injuries, and the pool for Gardner only spent $11,000 on medical expenses. So, for those of you that are used to seeing work comp numbers, those are unheard of. And we closed the year out with no open claims. So, all of our claims were minor, they were all closed out, and we started the year at zero. So, good news, and I just wanted to share with you, and thank you all, because we do appreciate the support from our safety committee, and the city's on the right path and doing the right things.
Good job, good job of the committee. Jim and David put a memo in front of you regarding the Edgerton Sewer Project and consideration of a cooperative effort. David?
I think we have a map we can show you to give you a little better feel for what we're talking about. This is excerpted from the 2004 Wastewater Master Plan. This shows the entire service area for the city, obviously, a little bit of adjustments on the southeast corner due to the intermodal, but still, it shows in general, it's roughly 11,000 acres that will ultimately be served by Kill Creek Plant. The, let's go to the next one. Down in the southeast corner, the three areas labeled Bull Creek 2, or BC 2, 4, and 5, basically all flow to the southwest. Mr. Press and Mr. Melvin have been talking to the Edgerton City Administrator. They have retained a design builder for a new plant in the vicinity of 191st and Waverly, also includes a lift station about 100...
The first one's 199, it's back a long time.
Yeah, excuse me, thank you very much, 199th and Homestead, and then the lift station's 191st and Waverly. The city has always needed a lift station in that area. We have several interim lift stations. We're pumping back to the old Bull Creek Plant near the cemetery, which pumps up to the Kill Creek. near the cemetery, which pumps up to the Kill Creek. We have an opportunity to explore taking the flow from this area in the southwest to an Edgerton plant, which follows gravity. This has the potential to take about 10% of the area that would go to the Kill Creek Plant to another plant. It also would relieve the Bull Creek Lift Station roughly 40% of its area. The design builder, who's using Burns and McDonald as their engineer, they're in the planning phase of this process. They're at a point now where we could basically have them look at what it would take to expand their facilities and put costs together for us to consider for about $14,000. The potential for us is, number one, we have projects in the out years to expand the Bull Creek Plant, or Bull Creek Lift Station at a force mien and ultimately a tank to handle extraneous flow. This would possibly either delay or eliminate the need for those improvements. Additionally, down the road, we're going to, we have an interim expansion of Kill Creek coming up. Probably won't be able to avoid that. But this could have the capacity to reduce our ultimate expansion of Kill Creek. What we would, it's twofold. Number one, let you know of this opportunity. The $14,000 to Edgerton is within staff authority. But because of the magnitude of this issue, we just wanted to get your consent to proceed so you're aware of what's coming. Doesn't commit you to any further action with Edgerton. But as I say, this will allow Burns and McDonald to put together costs to determine what Gardner's share of this expansion would be to expand what they're planning for Edgerton purposes.
So this area that you've got on the screen now would essentially shift from Kill Creek and go to the new plant? And all the lift stations within this area would be decommissioned and moved?
Some, at least two would, possibly three. But it would give us that opportunity. The lift station that Edgerton is proposing in 191st is necessary to pump over a ridge to get to the gravity line. But yes, it does have the capacity to eliminate lift stations. Currently, all this area is either going to the south lift station, which needs to be expanded, would reduce some of that and more particularly, the Bull Creek Lift Station.
And what's the furthest east? Is that Moonlight Road?
Yes, that is Moonlight. Everything east of Moonlight, south of I-35 in the 2004 master plan, which we've looked at, that area is not intended to go to Kill Creek. It's currently, the intention would be Johnson County wastewater.
Right. Johnson County Road, right. So that would be, that would provide the opportunity to cover that.
Well, that area is in another watershed heading to the southeast.
Okay. So BC 6 would not be part of?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. BC 6 would continue to flow to the south lift station, which is located just at, near the interchange of Gardner Road and 100 and I-35. But everything, the areas that would be affected are BC 2, BC 4, and BC 5. Which I say is about 10%, give or take, of our total ultimate service area and roughly, give or take, 40% of what's flowing toward the Bull Creek Lift Station.
Okay. So BC 1 and BC 3 would stay?
Would continue to stay where they're going now. BC 3 essentially goes down to the south lift station.
Okay.
Which then pumps back to the Bull Creek Lift Station, which ultimately pumps to the Kill Creek wastewater plant.
Okay. And all you're looking for then is consensus? There's no action, formal actions being taken? How much is the Edgerton plant going to cost the Edgerton taxpayers?
Don't know that.
I've heard estimates of, do you know that number?
I don't have that information either.
And is this a way that they can defray the cost?
No. Actually, what they would be looking for is what's our share to expand it to accommodate us?
So they came to us or we came to them? We went to them?
This is something we have looked at for years. The need, since Gardner, as we were talking about when the fellows were being recognized for working for the treatment, wastewater treatment. Gardner's on a hill and we flow in all directions. We pump to the north. We have 20 lift stations. By getting ourselves into a, basically flowing with gravity, we eliminate lift stations by going in with a, basically more of a regional-type plant. We all save money. Paying Edgerton to treat our wastewater is no different than the arrangement we're currently doing on the east side with Olathe through the Cedar Creek Benefit District to serve some areas we can't treat. No different than what Olathe and Johnson County wastewater have been doing for years on the east side of Olathe.
But you're not proposing that we pay Edgerton? You're proposing that we help invest in the plant?
Ultimately, first step is what we want to do is see what, see what it would cost to expand their facilities to accommodate our service area. Second, we would have to enter into an arrangement where we would pay them for the operation and maintenance costs to treat our wastewater. Once again, very similar to what we're doing with Olathe on the east side of town.
But we're not, I mean, to Larry's point, we're not looking to lessen Edgerton's cost to build a facility.
No, we're looking to pay our share.
We're just going to maximize our dollars by adding on to the facility, right?
That's correct. We're looking to find out what it would take to add on and what it would take to pay our share of that expansion to accommodate us. So we would basically then, operationally, should this all come to fruition, then we would enter into an arrangement with them where we pay them per gallon going into their.
How we spoke with them, I mean, I assume that their council would have to approve the measures. Well, if we said and everything came together, it looks like it's the great way to move forward, they'd have to approve that? Is there any reason to believe they wouldn't be interested in entertaining that sort of?
Given the conversation that we've had, no. I mean.
I understand it's an informal conversation.
It's been an informal conversation. Obviously, no one can make promises for their council before the councils have considered that. But we've gotten very favorable support from them in working together and trying to see a way where we could both save money.
Great. But this, this project is really built for the intermodal. Is that, is that correct?